Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Looks like everyone is here. Let's stand and say a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, there's a couple of changes to the agenda, looks like. We added... Okay, we added bullet point to the recognition of good things happening. And we added a recommendation of hiring a new special ed teacher. Is there anything else? If not, would someone make a motion to approve those additions? Thanks, Dan. Is there a second? Thanks Angie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, now we just need to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks Kyle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Nicole. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Was there any type of public input this month? Thank you. Alright, recognition and good things happening. National Volunteer Week is April 20th through 26th. Thank you to everyone who generously contributes to volunteering at Leroy Ostrander. You are greatly appreciated. Thank you to LO Forever Committee. Fundraising effort earlier this month was a great success. Does anybody know how much was raised?
No, we have a meeting on Thursday and I'll take the report back.
Okay, I'm just curious. Seemed like it went well.
As far as I know.
Nice to have it.
It was.
Yeah. At the Minnesota Football Coaches Association meeting, Trevor Carrier won Sub-District East District Coach of the Year and Section 1-9 Player Coach of the Year. And Coach Carrier was also named Second Vice President of the Minnesota Football Coaches Association. So congratulations, Dan. Okay, is there anything else that we're missing on those types of thing videos?
We kind of want to mention something. We might do it during our report, but it kind of is great things happening with a student.
Okay.
So maybe whatever you want us to do, Dave, we'll do it.
Let's do it now.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Erin, you first.
Alright, well today Representative Mueller and Davids came down and presented Camden Hungerholt with a House Resolution honoring Camden Hungerholt Leroy Ostrander School on being named National Footballer for 2024. They came down and presented them, and they've invited him. I can pass this around instead of you reading it to you guys. And they've invited him to come up to be recognized on the floor at the State Capitol, so.
When is it? Do you know when that's gonna be?
No, they just came down, they presented that to him, and then she said I need to be in contact with her on that.
Took some pictures and...
Awesome.
Cam had his man Cato sweatshirt on, so perfect. Yes, it was awesome, you guys.
Congratulations to Cam. Alright, very good. Thank you. Moving on to our reports. I'll put this report from the student representative.
Spring sports are busy with games. The juniors took the ACT April 10th. The FFA chapter banquet was April 6th. State FFA convention is April 28th and 29th. The 25-26 registration is due April 17th. Leadership trip is April 23rd. College fair at the Twins game is April 24th. Prom is April 26th, and Grand March is at 7:00 p.m.
Sounds like April's kind of busy. Thank you. No staff report tonight. Okay. Principals report. Erin?
Okay, I should have a sheet in front of you. First, we have PLC goals. I always leave those up there. That's kind of what we focus on when we meet. The data diving of the test scores, how to improve our teaching, our RCD practices continues in our Marzano teaching evaluation process. So I just leave that on there because that's kind of what we focus on this year. 25-26 registration and schedules have already been out. I had the parent Zoom meeting last Thursday. We've met with students and registration will be due. Their forms are due Thursday, actually this Thursday, this Easter week already. So this Thursday, and then I'll be working on master schedules at the end of the month and hopefully have everything out beginning of May. That's kind of my goal, so everybody knows what kids know what they have before they go home for the summer, and teachers know their schedule before they go for the summer. So that's how that works. College partnerships, I had last month or two months ago, I had a list of maybe, I don't know, maybe 10 or so. We've got a new connection with Upper Iowa. I've not had any student teachers or anything with them, so we made the connection and we do have a student teacher coming here in the fall now. So I now have a connection with Upper Iowa, so hopefully that will lead to more student teachers in the future for that, so we're excited there. Read Act, completed Phase 1. We are waiting on Phase 2. And we also are waiting on curriculum and what direction we should be going with our curriculum in that world, so we'll keep posted. Custodial updates, Tim and I are working on putting together maintenance plans and cycles. Want to get those done before June 1st, so we have everything in one area. And really working on anywhere from yearly to six months to monthly to weekly to daily. Just really get a better grasp and control of what we need to make sure we're working on in the custodial world. Math curriculum, we are gathering samples and researching other curriculum. We're hopefully to be ordering in 2026. Master schedule, as I said, is in progress. That'll be finished after registration is done. CNA program update. We still do have a CNA program. We were running it out of the Mayo Clinic building. The city sold that, so we needed to find a place for the beds. Because I actually got the beds from Mayo. So we are working with Riverland right now, because that's Emily Brahm, our nurse, left me with there. So she's still gonna be teaching the course. It's still gonna be run through Riverland. It's still worth college credit now. But we did find a building in Adams that Riverland is going to occupy or use. So we are moving the program over to Adams. It's still our stuff and our thing, but still run the same, just different location, because we just didn't have a place for the eight, really the eight beds. That takes up a lot of space. So if you hear anything different, we still have the program. It's still ours. It's just not in Leroy. It is in Adams. Same people teaching it. They did change the program a little bit. In the past, the students had to go even on classroom days. Now they've changed it so classroom days they can Zoom, so they only have to go over to the program for lab days. So that'll be less travel for kids as well. Usually it's done by, they start a little bit in August. It's based on hours, and they're usually done by MBEA. If things go well, last year we actually had a waiting list. So we had to take seniors, obviously, got first choice at that. So if we continue with the interest, they might try to run a second program in the spring. So I'll keep you posted on that. So if you hear anything different, we still have the program. Of course, it's just not in town. But it is still our stuff. It'll work in the same way. ACT tests, we always offer, we do that for 11th grade. We've completed that here at school. MCU testing, we are in progress. I'll do the MCU testing. And really, that's what we're going on right now. Questions?
So busy?
Yeah, it's busy.
Any questions for Erin?
The CNA program, do you do it during school hours or is it after school?
So, that's a great question. So what we do is called Zero Hour. So it starts 7:00 or 7:30, depending on what time the instructor decides. So students usually go, it's usually first, or Zero Hour and First Period. We try to have students back to their schools by start of Second Period. In the past, we've done a couple longer days in August before school starts, like maybe four, four-hour days or six-hour days to knock off some of the hours. So they can shorten some of those regular days up, so they can get back to school sooner. But really, it's, we try, our goal is to get kids back to their home districts by start of more than 9 o'clock, 9 o'clock-ish. We try to get them back, so.
Thanks. Any other questions for Erin? Thanks Erin. Jen, superintendent's report.
Well, I have a lot of kind of really great things to share initially with all of you. As all of you are aware, our state fire marshal came in this week, and he actually wants to give us a gold star. Our staff did amazing. Our custodial staff, our paraprofessional staff, food service, administrative staff, teaching staff, did an outstanding job of prepping the building and readying it for us, or for him, I'm sorry. We had maybe 16 items that are, they're not dings by any means, they're just in question. Or he helped us with how to save money in our budget kind of thing. So we talked about it in building and grounds, but again, huge shout out to the staff. They did outstanding, outstanding. So pretty proud of them for that. If anytime you want to see the report, as you can see, it's not very long. Come onto my office and I'll share it with you. It's not very exciting though. Another great thing, I am going to apply for a grant through Mauer County. What it is, is we get people in who are experts at mapping buildings for safety. So they're gonna come in, I hope I get the grant, but I'll apply for it, and they'll come in and they are going to have this enormous map for us of all our exits, all our windows, safe zones, unsafe zones, things like that. So if I, of course, get that grant, I will surely let you know, but I'm hoping for it anyway. So I just want you to know I'm trying to get it. But in the same vein, I have reached out to the Mauer County Sheriff's Office in regards to some signage that we are going to be posting in our parking lots for specifically our students, but also our adults to basically put your cell phone down and click your seatbelt before you leave the parking lot, just to continue on that safety journey with our kids here. We feel like we should have a hand in that. So we're gonna continue to do that, work with Mauer County on that. Continuing to do some outreach with our community, this will be the fourth or fifth year that we are in partnership with the Iron Horse Marathon that comes through Riceville and of course Leroy. And they reached out to me a few years back to see if they could use our facilities here as a break. And I, you know, I asked John Stockdale and Erin and Tim Bly if we could start partnering with this cause. And sure enough, they reached out again and we said yes. So you'll be seeing here in the summer, and both, and Erin, Tim, John, I, we show up and help them any way we can. Any questions they have too, so kind of a good outreach for us anyway. I need to again express, as we did in our agenda, a huge thank you to every person that helped with that LO Forever banquet. As Kyle Stern said earlier, it was a great success and a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. I spent more money than I needed to, but maybe not enough for some people. Right there. But it was so much fun. So huge thank you to all those people that put that on. They did a great job. Some more good news, the Leroy Ostrander Public School pool has a facelift. It's been freshly painted. The deck has been power washed, new testing monitors, hoses, drains, spa jet, motors, you name it. We are really tackling that pool area and tonight, and our building and grounds folks can talk about it tonight too. But we're doing everything we can to really revamp it and get it where it needs to be. So you'll hear more about that too. Let's see here. I've been sending out quite a few emails related to kind of the fiscal happenings at the State Department and how it will relate to Leroy Ostrander. And I can't stress enough, it will hit us, whether it's this year or in upcoming years, if they continue down this track. So we are trying to be as fiscally responsible as I can, as we can. So today's email basically shared with the staff too that we know what's coming from St. Paul. We all also know what we're doing and we can control that. But it's being responsible with the dollar. It's looking at our credits, it's looking at teacher duties, it's looking at attrition. If a teacher leaves, do we need to fill that position? That's not cutting. That's called attrition, where you just remove that position. So that's kind of what we're working on. I'm not predicting cuts at this point, because I think we've slowly done that throughout the years to make us fiscally stable. But things can change by the end of May, by their exit. So I'll continue to keep you posted weekly. June will be a huge meeting for all of you, especially you new folks. You three in front of me when we present the budget to you and where we have had some attrition. Or we have maybe said, hey, we're not gonna use that substitute teacher anymore. She's too expensive. Or whatever it may be that's, of course, not the case. We can't find those, but that's an example. But we'll share in great detail of why you should support the budget we're going to present to you. But it's based off the information that I get from MSBA, MASA Weekly. I sit in on a superintendent webinar, and that's a good hour or two, and that's with all the superintendents. And so we get a lot of information. I take a lot of notes and then send off an email. You know, with cut and paste of some things, and some of it's my own narratives too. But I'll continue to do that and make sure you guys are well informed before June. But just know, people are nervous about this, as they should be. You know, all of us are nervous about jobs or, you know, their husband or wife's jobs, whatever, this day and age. It's scary stuff out there right now. And our first and foremost priority is making sure we keep jobs. If we don't have teachers teaching, kids aren't learning, and we understand that. If we don't have aides or paraprofessionals, custodians and non-certified staff here, kids aren't learning. We understand that. So we're good at looking at programs. We're good at looking at outside resources to help us, whatever it is, to make sure we support the human resource here. That's a priority I've always had. I'm gonna stick with it unless I'm told by all of you otherwise. So, but you'll hear more from me on that for sure. Final thing is the Mauer County and Fillmore Emergency Mitigation Meeting. I should have talked about this earlier. I'll continue to attend those. And I think that's maybe why a grant was offered too to me that I could apply for, just because sometimes I feel like I'm the only school person attending. But they're a pretty good meeting. They're long, but they have done a really, really fantastic job of just wanting our communities to be safe in every single angle you can think of. I'm so impressed with them. So a huge shout out to them as well. We, also for the board to know, graduation is coming up, so you'll be getting a formal invite from me. Some of you will have duties at the school board meeting, such as you, Mr. New will definitely. And so that'll be coming your way as well. That'll be a separate email, so just be prepared for that. And we hope you can all attend. Another great job, I should have said this earlier too, I have to shout it out to Chris Hansen. We put her in a role that she was a little scared of, and I'm gonna tell you, that woman has flourished. I am so proud of her. We have had, we had the Minnesota Department of Health come down to do their food and beverage establishment inspection. The report came back with flying colors yet again. This is like two or three years in a row now. Can't say enough good things. She's kicking butt in there, and so I'm so proud of her. She didn't want me to share that with you, but I'm in it right. I told her she can't tell me what to do. There we go. So yes, when you see her, please, please pat her on the back. She did great. Let's see, I think that's about it. We're getting all our emergency drills in. As Erin said, we're starting to talk about curriculum, so all next year. We'll be studying, practicing new curriculums. Will this math curriculum be better for our kids and teachers? Or will this one? We'll have multiple examples to choose from, so that's pretty fun. That's kind of our, one of our most favorite things we get to do as administrators is curriculum stuff. So that's coming our way as well, and that will be built into the next year's budget. Not next year, but the following, but we'll keep you updated on what we're deciding on that kind of stuff too. Also, just want to say, I know there's a lot of new stuff coming out, especially for the new board members, especially during budget season. But really, anytime, this is all new for you. This whole year is gonna be new for you. As some of my emails have stated to you, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. If there are school issues, we deal with them as a school. We don't have to answer to anybody except the school. That's who we answer to, and I want to be really clear on that. Especially when it comes to programs. We have all the answers if people have questions. If we don't, we will find the answers for people. But we run the show. We're not run by the city. We're not run by the county. We are locally controlled by us, and I just want to be clear on that. But please reach out with questions. Please tell our community. Just this week, we've actually, the last two weeks, we've enjoyed, we've had people come in and ask questions that we have never seen before. It's been really great. So yeah, so really promote that, that we don't live in an ivory tower here. We want people to come in. They may not like our answers, but they'll get answers. I promise you that.
And they'll get the truth.
And they'll get the truth unfortunately. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jen? Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We need to approve the March meeting minutes. Is there any corrections or questions on those? Okay, treasures reports? Any questions or comments about treasures reports? Okay. Looks like no fundraisers this month. Personnel, a lot of personnel this month. Administration is recommending the hiring of Logan Dries as a lifeguard at the pool.
We're still on consent.
We're on the consent agenda, yep, still on it. Number two, we need to recommend, a recommendation to approve the resignation of Melody Manning as our high school language arts teacher into the school year. Recommendation from the Activities Office to approve the hiring of the following fall coaches and advisors. Head coach Trevor Carrier. Head JV coach Nick Sweeney. Head Junior High Coach Ryan Evans. Junior High Assistant Coach Josh Seibert. Volunteer coach Aaron Hungerholt. So all those are the same as they were last year. All their salaries are based on the contract, EA contract that we are just starting to negotiate for the next couple of years. And cheerleading, co-head coaches Stacy Jacobson and Chris Hansen, and the One Act Play Advisor, Don Holmquist. Lot of consent agenda tonight. Also recommendation from the Activities Office to approve the hiring of following spring 2025 volunteer assistant golf coaches, Dave Tangren and Grant Manning. Recommendation to approve the hiring of Ian Thomason as the community ed director for the upcoming year. Recommendation to approve the hiring of Nikki Bergen as assistant activities director for the upcoming year. Recommendation to approve the hiring of Lee Andries as the community ed coordinator for the upcoming school year. And then the addition to the agenda, recommendation to approve the hiring of Brianna Klaus as the elementary special ed teacher for the upcoming school year 25-26. Alright, are there any questions on any of that in the consent agenda? Anything at all? Or did I miss anything? I don't think I did. So if there's no questions, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Thanks Angie. Is there a second? Thanks Dan. Any questions or discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Alright. Moving on to the discussion and action items, policy approvals. So the Policy Committee was busy again this month. We have the first reading of Policy 601, School District Curriculum and Instruction Goals. 602, Organization of School Calendar and School Day. 603, Curriculum Development. 604, Instructional Curriculum. 605, Alternative Programs. 606, Textbooks and Instructional Materials. 606.5, Library Materials. And 607, Organization of Grade Levels. Is there anything to add from the Policy Committee before we vote on the first reading?
These are all ones that we had looked at and had Dan. Actually, I didn't know that was Dan. Nothing?
Nothing on the first reading of those policies. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the first reading of those aforementioned policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the first readings of the policies.
Okay. Is there a second? Thanks Dan. Is there a second? Thanks Jess. Any other, any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Dave, can I just jump in quick?
Yep.
As you begin to look and approve our second readings, please make note that again, we are, our Congress is still in session. And so some legislative items may come our way, which include policy. So even if you approve second readings tonight, they may come to us and say, wait a minute. You have to turn around and do something different with your policies, and they may be our second readings. We don't know. So we talked about that at our last meeting too, that things are changing pretty rapidly right now in St. Paul, and even with the feds. But we'll be on it the best we can. We'll try to get everybody caught up as quickly as we can too.
So those will come back to us and we...
Yeah. Sometimes, there might even be ones that we read at second reading, and there might only be like a paragraph change. We probably would only have a second reading of it and be done, because they want it done like that potentially. And, but I'll let you know. I'll let you know if it's an immediate or whatever, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so now we're on the second reading of Policy 530, Immunization Requirement. 531, The Pledge of Allegiance. 532, Use of Peace Officers in Crisis Teams. 533, Wellness. 534, School Meals Policy. And 535, Service Animals in the Schools. Is there any questions or concerns about any of those policies? Sounds good. Anything, anybody, anything you have to add, Policy Committee? Nothing? I think James is the first reading. Okay. If there are no questions or discussion, is there a motion to approve the second reading of those policies they just mentioned?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of 530 through 535.
Okay, thank you Kyle. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Nicole. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. No donations. So we'll move on to approval of the hiring of the following fall coaches for school year 25-26.
Yeah, we'll pick that in a minute, sorry.
Okay. These guys are some special guys.
Were you worried you were not on the agenda?
That need special, special attention, right? Okay. So these would be...
I was playing Darren.
These would be football coaches, head assistant coach Kyle Stern, and volunteer coach Super Dave Farmingard. Alright. Any questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve those two guys as football coaches?
Separate, because each have to.
Ah, alright. So first, we'll vote on the head assistant coach Kyle Stern. Is there a motion to approve Kyle?
So.
Thanks Angie, is there a second? Thanks Dave, Dan? This is Dave. You're Dan. Alright. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there's one at stake. Okay, thank you Kyle. All right. Volunteer coach Dave Farley. Is there a motion to approve him? Thanks Dan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Jess. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And Dave is James. All right, thank you. Motion carried. All right. Approval of the 2025 senior class trip to the Wisconsin Dells. All right, who gets to, who gets to be the chaperone for that? Nick? No, tip, no?
I think it's Nikki Carey as well.
Yeah. Amazing.
Yeah, she does it. She sets it up.
Sounds like fun. All right, are you in Dave?
Uh, no.
I'll let them know all that. We went to, we went to the.
Oh, like the Yozar? Kyle, did you still go there?
Yeah.
No, still watched us.
We had. Your old Merlin Yos.
Okay, I don't even remember those. So, cool. All right, is there a motion to approve the 2025 senior class trip to Wisconsin Dells?
So.
Thanks Kyle, is there a second? Thanks Angie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. The upcoming district calendar is April 18th to 21st would be the spring break, there's no school. May 2nd is mid-quarter. May 23rd is graduation. May 26th is Memorial Day, so there's no school. May 30th, the end of fourth quarter. And June 2nd is the last day for, or that staff development and last day for school, so. All right, anything else? Should go on that?
When's the seniors' last day in the?
The 17th.
17th.
Yeah, yeah, it's the Friday before that. The.
Yeah. So be prepared.
And that's technically, they're out in the morning. They check in with me and they're out in the morning.
Okay. Oh, one thing I probably forgot is are there any committee reports? I have a couple. We just met today, our first meeting was the teachers' negotiation. So we just set up some ground rules and some, we scheduled a few meeting dates. That's where they all began, so. So that's, we'll be getting into that here. Our next meeting is in about a month or so, so. And the other one was we had a building and grounds committee meeting today, which was attended very well. So I was happy to see that. Jen mentioned the pool already, so there's a lot of things happening there. There was some stuff that's probably been neglected over the last few years and now we're paying for it, so. That's the problem there, but it is what it is and we have to deal with it now. Other than that, we talked about some other ideas as far as bringing in a group to maybe just take a look at our mechanical systems and train our people into, into how to, you know, check on those and maintain that kind of stuff. That's yet to be researched, but we talked about that kind of stuff. Anything else that we?
The pool was the main thing. But a lot of other things we maybe wanted to get done on the back burner for now.
And the pool might have eaten up a lot of our building and grounds budget for this coming year, so. Anything else? Anybody have any other committee reports or anything?
We have scholarship meeting coming up selection.
Okay.
And then we'll present at Federation.
Sounds like that's always fun. Our kids are very fortunate.
I think I, when I, I had a little, I met with the seniors three weeks ago or so, I think. I'd say on average, we give out between 75 and 100,000 every year.
Yeah, that's cool. How many schools our size can do that?
I don't think even big schools probably do that.
Low.
That's cool. So that's something that we are very proud of in the year. Is there anything else? If not, it's time for a motion to adjourn. Thanks Dan. Is there a second to that? Thanks Dave, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we're adjourned.